Okay.
John, welcome to the April thirteenth Eric session. Jody's gonna lead us in my pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Did it open?
Okay, I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter and happy Passover. It's the season to be happy, to join hands, and for forgiveness, so.
Happy Easter.
Happy.
Happy Easter.
And all town employees, there's a Easter bonnet event today in town.
Charlie, that's where you're going from here.
Send your selfies to Larry.
Okay, so we have resolutions on the agenda. Do you want to read them?
Yes, okay. Number one, Riverhead Bay Homes Water Main Installation Water Capital Project. Anybody have anything to say about this?
The check was received.
Okay. No?
Okay.
Number two, authorize the removal of fixed asset records from the system.
Good.
Okay.
No shares. The lists are getting.
Most of this is recreation stuff.
That's what it's, oh, okay.
It's all recreation. Number three, awards bid for Gatsby forty-five actuarial services for the Town of Riverhead. Anybody have anything to say?
Was that the same?
Go ahead.
So the independent audit committee, we opened these bids back in March. We went through them, we sat with the independent audit committee, I got an email this morning from them picking Dan Zinger and Mark Offas. They're a little bitter on it and they're qualified, so. Basically, it's an easy pick, it's just actuarial services.
Okay. You want to say for this next one?
Don't go in there.
Appoint a student intern to the accounting department at an hourly salary of eleven twenty-five. You need them.
Yes.
Order them.
There's two that come back into all of our inventory every summer. There's two of them that come back, two interns that come back, or two interns that come in.
Oh, these are the ones that do the audits?
They do the inventory, yeah. They take, they take all the fixed assets and everything, yeah.
Put stickers on everything.
They do.
The next resolution is the same, except that different.
The next resolution is the second person.
Okay, thank you. Appoint student intern to the accounting department, that's the second one.
And the different rates of pay because one did it a year prior and.
Yes, they get a twenty-five cent increase.
Right.
It's ten seventy-five, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Reassigns the salary of the Assistant Recreation Program Coordinator.
This is, we had a retirement in our recreation department, so that position is no longer going to exist. We're only in April, we have money left over for the salary. Hopefully, this person will step in and take over a lot of the responsibilities that he had as per the recreation superintendent, so he's requesting that she be moved into a different step so she can have supervisory position and supervise and schedule field appointments and things of that nature that Mr. Janasek was doing for many years. So, that's what this is about.
Anything else? Okay.
They came in.
The next one. Approve. Oh, this one I had. Appoint a provisional recreation leader.
Right.
No, so this is John.
No, we just did that one.
I'm sorry, I thought we did ask for this.
We did.
One replaces Ashley.
Oh, there's a leader, right.
So this is Jordan, pardon.
Anybody have any comments on that?
No, this is a person that actually does other things that Jim did, and he's been a part-time employee for many years, and we are hiring him full-time, so. We have still savings in the salaries, and we think that the two of them together will be able to fulfill all of the duties that Mr. Janasek has, we're hoping.
Well, we're hoping.
Okay, approves an administrative site plan, an administrative site plan for an addition to the Suffolk County Historical. Approves site plan.
Karen talked about this.
Shouldn't be that, should it? Just we're approving a site plan.
This is the one that Karen spoke about a few weeks ago.
She brought in the plans last week, John, for the library.
They're gonna make it for a handicap entrance.
Okay.
Remember you said you didn't get it how they put modern with old?
No. Coming back to me.
I do remember.
Oh, thank you.
Appoints a call-in Assistant Recreation Leader Two to the Recreation Department. Any comment? Ratifies the appointment of a call-in Recreation Aid to the Recreation Department. Well, it's the season for recreation.
Correct.
We're getting to the summer season, so that's why you gotta see all these appointments.
Sixty pages, so.
Yeah.
Riverhead Recreation Department sets the fees for the two thousand seventeen spring booklet and brochure.
I can't wait to look at it.
Okay, that's been mailed out already, hasn't it?
This is gonna be a long sixty pages.
Well, how many pages?
Or just go to my total left, John.
Here's the book, we already, I already received mine, so.
Is it out already?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me show you.
Yeah, it came out.
He's gonna get you to the next resolution.
He's gonna give me the next one fast. If it's sixteen to thirty pages, you're here for a while.
Jim Booten's got it down.
He's got it down.
If he can get it down, anybody can.
He got that right.
He's flying over here, he's good.
Authorizes the selling of the annual beach permits to Angelo's Deli, Bait and Warren's Tackle Center. So move. Oh, that's it, I think I'm reading these things wrong, okay. We do that every year. Authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with D and B Engineers and Architects, PC. Any comment?
Nope, they're doing a great job.
No comment.
Jody wants to talk about the next one, though.
Oh, she doesn't?
Yes, seeing as we are, there was a letter of intent where we have a prospective buyer that wants to buy the entire property, we had to break the recreation trail out of the entire property. So, I met with the surveyor who did the survey for the Epcal subdivision, and he gave us a couple of proposals for the eastern property line and also for the southern property line of the Grumman Site so that we could do a meets and bounds description to attach to the easement to the county so that we can get the money and hopefully start the work next week.
Okay.
So, this, the one proposal, I'll pass them down.
Just so everybody knows, this is the authorized supervisor to sign an agreement with L.K. McLean Associates for the survey of the Epcal Bicycle Path.
Right, are you passing them down?
Almost five, about, twenty-two fifty for one, twenty-two hundred for one.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
And twenty-five hundred for the other one. So forty-five hundred dollars will get us a meets and bounds description to attach to the easement to send to the county, so the contract will be binding with the county, and then we can start the rec trail right away. The engineers are ready to go, right, guys?
Where's the money coming from?
The money will, can come out of the grant.
I thought it was coming out of the grant.
It will come out of the grant, so.
We have to lay it out first and then we get it back out of the grant.
Right.
We're just gonna catch twenty-two because the easement has to be in the contract that gets signed, so we have to get the money out.
We have to get the meets and bounds description. We have to get the meets and bounds description to attach to the easement to send it off to the county. The county has already signed the contract.
No, Sean has signed the contract, but we need to.
The county won't sign it until the meets and bounds.
We need to submit the easement with it, and then with the parks grant, we may even be able to get a little bit of McLean's previous survey across, but we're not sure if it was decent enough.
This is something that I started about eight years ago, and then we stopped, we put three miles of the bike path in and walking trail, and then Jody took over, and Jody got the, I think this is not gonna complete it.
It's gonna be a total of thirteen miles when we get done with it.
Well, we're gonna complete, but this is not gonna complete it, this is gonna do two-thirds of the way completed.
Right.
So, that's why this is important, we've been working on it for a long period of time. Anybody else with any comments on this?
Twenty-five hundred.
It's a total of forty-five hundred.
All right, okay.
So if I can get that resolution signed by.
I'd be surprised if that wasn't done.
If I can get that resolution signed before everybody leaves the building today, then we can get L.K. McLean started on that, on the work, okay.
It's forty-seven.
Next resolution, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement, authorizing the town to accept funds from Suffolk County Office of the Aging to supplement the town's residential repair program for the elderly. And this is a free thing for the Town of Riverhead. We spend all the money from the county, they pay for everything, and it's free to the elderly, so.
They sign up.
They put up ramps, they clean their gutters, and they do small stuff, so it's very good. Any comment?
No.
Pretty standard.
Our next one consists of terms and conditions of the Revenue Recovery Service Agreement between the Riverhead Volunteer Ambulance Corps and the Certified Ambulance Group Incorporated regarding emergency medical transportation services and emergency medical services involving motor vehicle accidents. And I'm saying motor vehicle accidents. Authorizes information on May first, two thousand seventeen, at twelve a.m. of the previous established ambulance district user fee schedule in Riverhead Ambulance District.
Do you want to tell me about the meeting that they had last week?
And that's what we're going to do, we had a public meeting last week to describe what we're gonna start doing is billing for automobile accidents. Since this has showed that eighty-five percent of the accidents that happen in Town of Riverhead are from out-of-town residents, and our taxpayers are paying the medical bills, so we're gonna charge advanced life support, if they need the advanced life support, it's gonna be twelve hundred dollars. This is, just goes to the automobile, the automobile insurance carrier, it doesn't go to anybody. Everybody driving an automobile in New York State has to have liability insurance, and this covers it, and their insurance will not increase because of this. Basic life support, that means if nobody needs any needles or any advanced life support, nine hundred dollars, and then we're gonna charge eighteen cents a mile for transportation because we do take people with Stony Brook in our ambulance, so we're gonna charge eighteen cents a mile for transportation. And this is gonna start May first at twelve a.m. So, anybody have any comment on this?
Ultimately, what it does is the money that the town's gonna bring in from this is gonna go back into the ambulance tax district to reduce the taxes for the residents. As John said, the majority of the car accidents involve out-of-town residents, causing our, the ambulance tax district to go up through no fault of our own residents, this money will go back in and it will lower the actual tax rate.
Well, not only will it stabilize the tax rate, but it's, there is a portion of that that's gonna be set aside for capital improvements with the ambulance district down the road. We're gonna need a bigger house, or maybe a better facility, so it would generate revenue to build that fund up so that that can be done.
Both to save the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And the, this money can only be spent on medical or ambulance stuff. We cannot put it in the town budget and pave roads with it or fix buildings, we can only use it for medical reasons for the town. So, that's the idea, and I think it's a good idea, and it'll save the taxpayers a heck of a lot of money.
I agree.
Okay, next one, awards bids for disposal recycling municipal solid waste. Anybody?
Nope.
Awards bid for Gatsby forty-five actual services, actuarial, didn't we just do this?
Yeah, it's duplicate.
Town of Riverhead, is this a duplicate?
I don't know, you have a resolution.
I don't think it is a duplicate, I think the other one had a little different heading, didn't it?
It is.
Okay. I wanna duplicate, so take that out, okay.
Let me look at it, yeah.
Next one, the Doffley Local Law amending chapter two thirty-seven to town highway, streets and sidewalks of the Town of Riverhead Code, two thirty-seven dash thirteen penalties for offenses. And this is that the, we're gonna raise the rate for snow removal on sidewalks, if the commercial establishment does not shovel the sidewalks in front of their buildings, the fines going, it's no less than two fifty and no more than two thousand five hundred. It used to be just two fifty, and that's gonna go down for the first offense, second offense is seven fifty, but no more than twenty-five hundred, the third offense will be a thousand, but no more than twenty-five hundred. So we're trying to get these establishments to clean the sidewalks in front of their buildings. Jody, you put this forward, any?
That's good.
Nope.
Did you say?
Nope.
Okay. Authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Telcom Data Services Incorporated.
Bill, this isn't, what is that?
That's the firm that we get the music from? We get the music from this firm?
I don't know what it is, I was gonna have to ask the board. I'm not familiar.
Who put this forward?
No, it's the Internet Data and Floor Maintenance. What is this?
I put it forward, this is the one, Jim, that you were.
Oh, this is the one from, yeah, that needed, right, they needed.
They need access.
They need access, right, they wanna put, right, they wanna look at, it's a no fee, they're looking to get voice, data, internet, cost center for the town so they can put a proposal together where we can save some money. They already sent us a do not compete or do not disclose.
Mutual nondisclosure.
Nondisclosure to protect the town.
Which I changed a little bit.
It's just so they can get access, I'm trying to see if we can do something because we're a little behind the times when it comes to work, and I wanna see if they can deliver, that's all.
We had an IT meeting on Tuesday?
Yesterday.
We had an IT meeting on Tuesday where the recreation department came in and discussed that the phone system that they wanted to use.
That's what prompted this.
And, you know, we just are not set up for it right now because we don't have a complete loop, but if they wanna do a network analysis free of charge, then they can, but this is usually where it stops, when they just say.
Well, they've been here, they've done site inspections, they know that there's a disconnect with the fiber optic between the west end and the east end, they know all of that.
Okay.
And they, I guess they've worked with Huntington Town and other areas on the island, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I have no problem with that.
They're not a vendor of any sort, they're strictly professionals that look at municipalities how they can save money, so.
And it doesn't cost us anything.
Right, it doesn't cost us anything, exactly right.
All right, the next one, ratifies execution of drainage easement in connection with amended drainage of old vine golf course, that's Reeves Golf LLC, and this is, just finishing up, we.
Oh, my goodness.
They completed the drainage, and we never had an easement for the pipes that go onto their ground, so if anything happens to them, so this is just giving us an easement.
It's actually, it gives us an easement to go onto the golf course and fix pipes if something should happen out on the golf course, where we'll give them notice that there's a problem with the drainage structures and give them an opportunity to fix it, and if they don't fix it, then we have the right to go onto the property and fix it.
Right.
Could they rake the sand bunker on hole number seven, please, thank you.
Yeah. And we've been waiting for this for.
Very long time.
It flooded, the roads flooded over there, and this is taking care of the flooding, so we're glad that's finally finished.
Mm-hmm, and we can take over the roads, hopefully.
Next one, declares Riverhead Sound Associates LLC in default in connection with the subdivision of town AquaWarg Golf Resorts, AKA Highlands of AquaWarg.
Okay.
That's been a long time coming.
Anything on this one?
This is where we're looking to pull their performance bond.
At that time.
Because they haven't done the work they were supposed to do, and those people have been driving on broken-up asphalt and gravel for a long time, so.
And they've been promising for a long time.
Now, this is what we're doing here.
They came in to talk to us about it, and Bob was gonna send notification to the insurance company and the bonding agency, letting, putting them on notice, and I guess they've been on notice for a few months now, Bob, and.
Yeah, they, the insurance company.
Wanna come up?
Come on up, it's true people can hear you.
I mean, I said that during the August meeting we had last year, a letter with a number of CCs to all the parties to let them know what's going on, and about two weeks ago, I sent a follow-up email to the bonding company, the person there, I think his name's George Reddick, R-E-T-T-I-G, to let them know that we're still sort of in the same step towards the place. I have had some regular conversations with a guy named Patrick Perone, who is with K and L Gates from New Jersey, who is now the lead litigation counsel for the first project sponsor, who is still hopeful that he can get all the parties in the room and possibly get this moment going forward, but we got about a month.
Yeah, because we put this all basically to springtime.
I think on April eighteenth, they'll be just a little shy of a month because May seventeenth is the last extension ends for the work to be done.
Good.
So.
So we're pushing them along.
And I'll keep, you know, we just sent out another follow-up letter to both project sponsors to let them know that based upon lack of progress, based upon if you move it forward, we're gonna continue our path.
Right, because now the weather's good and they can get to the paving, and there's no excuse now at this point in time.
So when this resolution is adopted, you'll forward a copy to all the parties involved?
They have already been given a copy of the planning board resolution, which was adopted the first meeting in April, and the fact that this is being put forward for April eighteenth, next Tuesday, and I am gonna call Mr. Perone, who I think I've been having conversations with, just to make him aware, and if they wanna be here, they can be here.
Okay.
Just so that there's nobody not aware of it.
Good man.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Next resolution, approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Manuel Fire Department Brush Truck Training Event, Sunday, May twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, and this is because of, we're getting into brush fire territory now, and if you ever draw one of these brush trucks, they are hard to drive in the woods, so they do have a training every year for our neighboring fire departments at Epcal, which is in their fire district, and to train the new members of the fire department and some of the older members and the new techniques they have for these brush trucks. So it's something that's needed out here because of all our wooded areas, and so they train there, and we'll give them permission to do it.
And there's something in there that talks about them.
Restoring the property.
Right. Well, they have to restore, if they dig up any kind of property, they have to restore the property to where they started. Sometimes they'll dig a hole or something in the ground to make the trucks go in and out, so, that's it, but it helps the fire departments. Ratifies the approval of chapter two fifty-five application for Church of the Harvest Youth Program Plant Sale Fundraisers. They're gonna have three of them, Friday, April fourteenth, April fifteenth, and Sunday, April sixteenth, it's a weekend, I think everybody should get out there.
Yeah, they'll be out at Edward Sporting Goods at twenty-five, twenty-five and fifty-eight. Edward Sporting Goods is where they're gonna be selling.
Yeah, Edward Sporting Goods. So, but they do, they do great things, they give free meals on some of the holidays, and this one is the fundraiser they have.
Yes.
Approves the chapter two fifty of application of Elite Eats Incorporated, five K Road Race Long Island Summer Classic, July eighth, two thousand seventeen, and this is gonna be at the, on Plasky Street, starts on Plasky Street.
What day is July eighth?
End on Columbus Avenue.
Saturday.
Well, that's, it's from three to nine at Long Island, and there's five o'clock mass at St. Isidore, so I thought that we were gonna not do these during mass times.
Those same concerns were last year, and they addressed them.
With their security, didn't allow people to park over by the church.
They secured it, and, right.
Does it say that in here?
I don't know if it says it, but I know that's what they did last year.
They weren't impacted at all, actually.
Well, it should say that in here, if it doesn't say that in here, that they will have security to make sure that the people are not overflowing into the church parking lots.
Next one is twenty-six, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Jamesport Manor Inn. And they're gonna have a rose festival.
No rosé.
Rosé festival, what is that?
Wine.
What is a rosé festival? Saturday, July eighth, two thousand seventeen, I guess you have to be a rosé to go there?
No, you drink rosé wine.
What is a rosé?
Rosé wine.
It's sort of like scotch, but it's a little lighter.
It's wine, okay. Anybody have any comments on this?
No.
Nope. Approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Long Island Antique Power Association, twenty-fifth Annual Tractor Pull and Engine Show, oh, this is good.
That is good.
Yes, that's a hell of a good, right?
Tractors, they pull some weight, and that's gonna be on Saturday and Sunday, May twentieth and twenty-first, and Saturday and Sunday, July eighth and ninth, two thousand seventeen. That's gonna be on Sound Avenue.
Yeah, right at their place, right next to.
At their building by Mataline in Jameswood. Approves chapter two fifty. Riverhead Rotary Garden Festival, May eleventh, two thousand seventeen, and May fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and this is for the hospital, I think, the hospital used to have the, so the.
Yes.
The garden, the plants.
Yeah.
Right, and since they changed hands, they're not doing that anymore, so the Rotary's gonna do it for them, and it's gonna be held on Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand sixteen, through Sunday, May fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and it's gonna be at the Office Max parking lot, so.
It's all two thousand seventeen.
Actually, it's, yeah, Tango Mall's, it's gonna be held at, right?
May eleventh through May fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
What did I say?
Sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It starts in two thousand sixteen.
I'm a year behind. We'll get there.
We're getting there.
Move up a year.
We knew it, Jim.
Okay.
All right.
Ready? And the next one, authorizes cosponsorship of Alive on Twenty-Five, Street Festival on Thursday nights, July thirteenth, July twenty-seventh, August tenth, and August twenty-fourth. Rain date, August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, five p.m. to nine thirty p.m. with the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association Incorporated. Along Main Street between Griffin Avenue and Union Avenue, authorize the supervisor to execute a license agreement with the designated craft food vendors, alcohol vendors, and other parties, suspends enforcement of Riverhead Town Code Section two oh five point three, public consumption and open possession of alcohol beverages as solely limited to affirmation dates, time, and place, Alive on Twenty-Five. I thought we weren't gonna suspend that because they're gonna have people inside.
We have to suspend it anyway, because it's still.
Have to suspend it because it's still in public.
Right, it's still in a public area.
Even though they're in pens, it's still in the public, yeah.
Oh, it's on the road, okay. So it should only be suspended.
It's limited to the pens.
It should only be suspended to that area.
It is, it is.
Well, that's what all of the agreements say, so you're authorizing the execution of agreements.
Certainly don't need to suspend on Plasky Street, or Second Avenue, anything like that.
The agreement states that. Does it say that it's in the designated areas? I'm sure it does.
Along Main Street between Griffin Avenue and Union Avenue.
Yeah, between Griffin Avenue, okay, all right.
No, it actually says in the resolution too, that alcohol service consumption shall be limited to the licensed premises, beer garden, more fully delineated, alcohol vendor.
It also says that there will be a security in place to make sure nobody comes in and out again.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty ridiculous.
The last one, it authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for well and pump service for the water district. I guess they need, we're building a well, well and pump, what are we doing with the?
Yeah, it's the.
Yeah, one more, you have to pass that down.
Engineers, you wanna talk to us about the well and pump? Station, it's, authorizes the town to publish and post notice to bidders for well and pump service for the water district.
That's what you guys have been talking about with Mark.
Yep.
Okay, this is just for, if something breaks down in the houses with the housing, they're not gonna go into the well with fixing anything, are they?
It's for the well stations, pump stations, to do maintenance.
Yeah, the pump stations.
For the maintenance of.
Yep, yeah, anything that's in there, generators and stuff that makes the water come up out of the ground and go into the towers, okay.
And then it just.
All right, now the last one is Riverhead Water District Geological Survey, Budget Adjustment. So we're moving it from plant improvements to professional services.
Yeah, they're gonna come in and do a sort of one or two survey. Yeah, they're gonna map. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna map it, they're gonna map where the saltwater intrusion's coming from.
So, this is what their fee was, right? This is not on top of their fee, this is what USGSB was, right? Because it's being transferred to professional services?
Right.
Or is this on top of the...
No, 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 this is a, this is a signed contract and paper.
Okay.
All right. With that, I would make a motion that we close the town board work session and go into executive session for engineering. So move. Won't fail it?
Aye.
No, I like sitting here, it's just fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I want to put my Easter bonnet on, John. Jim?
I was looking for the apples, I was looking for the apples and grapes and stuff.
Everybody.
If you put that upside down, I was looking for fruit.
Put the Easter bonnet on.
I thought you saw LaShaw, saw LaShaw's Amish heart or something on the way here.
Hi, how are you?